Rise for them, vacation remain standing for the pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and every day that you give us. Help us to be patient and trust that you are in control. Give us the courage and strength to remain hopeful and faithful about what's next. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 3rd, 2025 be approved as printed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
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 Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye. There you go. Motion carried, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, under communication, I do have one proclamation this evening. Whereas the citizens of this nation live in freedom won through the great sacrifice and many tribulations, which have provided the foundation for a free, prosperous, and independent life. And whereas each generation in turn must work to maintain this freedom, otherwise through carelessness or indifference, the rights and liberties enjoyed may vanish. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize this freedom and to honor the nation which provides it. And now therefore, I, John P. Call, Mayor of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, urge all citizens to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship with appropriate celebrations and observances on the 4th of July, Independence Day. So, we have the great red, white, and boom coming up 4th of July. There's gonna be some more stuff that Lisa handles all of our public communication. And we talked about it this morning, probably in another week or so, we'll be posting a lot of stuff about the red, white, and boom down on the riverfront this year. We have about 200,000 folks and I'll just say it's in the top 2% of the nation, the fireworks display. They have another great display planned for this coming 4th of July, so stay tuned for that. Public comment, this is where you would step up to the podium if you have a comment on an agenda item. Whichever would like to go first? Yes, sir? Yeah? Yeah. Is that on?
Should be.
Should be on.
No, it doesn't sound like it's on.
It should be plugged in if you... Tap on the door and see if Mark, right across the hallway. Is there? We just wanna make sure that they can pick you up on the recording. Well, it's not plugged, for starters.
He's gonna be working for a while.
Yeah.
I wonder if... Oh, no, it's not hooked up.
I wonder, hey, hey Scott? Scott, grab this microphone here if you don't mind, just set it up there, he should be able to use that. Click that on. Let's see if that one works.
Gotta make sure everybody hears you.
Testing, testing.
Does it work?
No, I heard him.
Okay.
This is not talking very loud.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Call and members of the city council. My name is Nathan Minehump and I'm here today on behalf of my wife, my children, and in memory of our beloved dog Bella, who was recently and tragically killed in an unprovoked attack by dogs running at large in our neighborhood. This event has devastated our family. It has also exposed a painful truth, that under the current city ordinance, there has been little recourse to prevent the continued threat these animals pose to the public. We're here tonight to support the proposed amendment to the dangerous dog ordinance and to urge it swift and unanimous approval. This isn't just about justice for Bella, it's about ensuring that no family and no child has to endure the trauma we have. We believe this amendment is necessary and an overdue step to protect our community and hold negligent pet owners accountable before tragedy strikes again. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration of this vital change to improve public safety.
I know it's not easy stepping up here and talking about that. We spoke shortly after that incident. And I told you that I'd bring forward an amendment as soon as I could. And I asked the council when we get to that agenda item to please support that. It's important. Unfortunately, the way city ordinance read at the time, it wasn't strong enough for there to be any action taken against the animals that took your family pet. So, we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen here again. And I know it doesn't bring back Bella, but just know that we truly do care. You know, I wish circumstances were different, but we're doing this in her honor, so, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the city council on an agenda item? Seeing no one, okay. Commissioner Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consisting of items numbered 1 through 4. Item number 1 adopts a resolution number 2526-028. Resolution to approve payment of the scheduled bills listed on schedule number 3 in the amount of $371,401.42. Item number 2 adopts a resolution number 2526-013 on second reading. Resolution accepting lowest responsible bidder for residential demolition contractor from JIMAX Corp. Item number 3 adopts a resolution number 2526-014 on second reading. Resolution approving Laserfish software licensing renewal for the city with ICC Community Development Solutions. Item number 4 adopts a resolution number 2526-015 on second reading. Resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of East Peoria and the International Associate Firefighters Local 1498 for a period beginning May 1st, 2025 and terminating on April 30th, 2028. As listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 Mayor Call?
Aye.
All president voting aye, your honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered 1 through 4 listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted. And the items numbered 2 through 4, having been read once by their title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4862 here to attach, an ordinance authorizing special use for used vehicle sales on property located at 2337 Washington Road in the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
What we have here is the property, it was a former car wash in sunny land. Petitioner Ari Assani wants to use that property as a used car lot. They're gonna convert the facility and they went in front of the ZBA. They presented their case, they showed the layout, they showed... They asked for a certain amount of cars, they have five or six locations that's gonna be for employees and I think, believe accessible in what are called handicap parking spots. So, the ZBA listened and coming out of their meeting, they had voted 6-0 to recommended approval of the petition for this to be used as a car lot. And there were two conditions, one that they had to meet the landscaping plan, or landscaping requirements. And that plan has to be submitted to the city soon. And then the other one being that there's 45, a limit of 45 cars on that lot. So, other than that, so I put that in front of you tonight for approval.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4863 here to attach, an ordinance authorizing special use for a fence with excessive height on property located at 220 Avondale Drive in the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, be accepted on its first reading as read by the table, or by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
This case is a little more complicated. The petitioner Nancy Alexandra at the address, belt the fence without any permits. And the problem comes in, or at least the neighbor, you know, if you watched the meeting or attended the meeting, the... There's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of personal reasons here. But the... There's some pictures in the packet, you may have got the opportunity to see it yourself in the packet that we received, you know, the wall. The largest wall allowed is six, or wall. That word was used in the description of the property. Largest fence is six foot. And it's eight, and then if you look at the pictures that were included from the neighbor's side, you can see it's either eight, 10 feet in spots as that property slopes off. So, the ZBA, just so you know, the ZBA voted 4 to 2, they were split. The dissenting votes were concerned of the precedent that sits by allowing residential fences of eight foot. And you know, as I listened and looked at the information, I myself, even though there was personal reasons for, and emotional, and I take empathy with the petitioner who's grieving or still grieving and is looking for some privacy, I don't find myself the reason to support the special use in this particular case. So, I will not be supporting this ask today. Again, the ZBA recommended approval. I will not be agreeing with that due to the reasons I just mentioned. There are many ways to create privacy. And some of those aren't a hard structure that can be eight to 10 feet in height and space. And so, I'm putting that in front of you, the staff also does not recommend the approval of this special use, so.
So, I don't normally pipe in first, I'm going to on this one. This fence was installed six years ago. I have a major problem with the neighbor complaining about a fence that has been in place for six years and then forcing someone to come forward. I'll just say this, I understand the concerns with staff on the eight foot, the precedent. This is a unique circumstance. The homeowner admittedly did not know she needed to get a permit. That happens a lot in this city. So, then obviously, our job then is to guide them through the proper process, which this is, to get a special use for that. I look at my own neighborhood, and I just explained this to staff today. I had one of my neighbors, been there, had a fence installed, six-foot fence, they installed a pool. And the next-door neighbor lady, new neighbors, she sat there and watched them install the fence, and here it is two years later. And I'll be darned if two weeks ago she didn't reach out, she got a problem, she gotta stare at a fence. I'm like, it's been there for two years. You know, I just, I struggle with this. And I guess, here's what I'm gonna say, I looked at those pictures and I understand the landscape on the backside of the houses, where, you know, in spots maybe it looks like it could be 10 feet, maybe it is. But let's say you take the fence out and you make her install these evergreens or whatever they are, you're still not gonna have a view. If their objection is this blocking their view, your view's still gonna be blocked. Whether it's a 10-foot, Ave, whatever you call those things, I think it's Harbor Vitae.
Harbor Vitae.
Okay, whatever it is. Or this eight-foot fence.
No, we would not be making her, that would be her option, it's from a privacy perspective.
I understand, but...
And the gentleman that you said, why didn't he wait for six years? If you were, if you would go back and listen to the meeting, he had some cancer-related issues and he wasn't even in mind of, in a frame of mind. And I'm not defending him or the homeowner, I'm just wanting to put what was discussed in the zoning board of appeals out in front of you.
Sure. Oh, I get it, and I wanna be respectful of everybody up here. I'm just stating where I stand and I'm gonna support allowing her to keep her fence in place, it's been there for six years. But anyway.
Well, can I jump in?
Yeah, this is...
I watched it on the video and first off, I consider myself a constitutionalist. If you own it, you control it. So, she lost her husband. She had the fence put up professionally. So, they should've came and gotten the permit. So, for instance, if somebody wants me to put a sewer in for them, and I don't expect them to go get sewer permit, I come and get it, that's part of my deal. I, if I install the sewer, I get the permit, I'm held accountable, the warranty and all this kinda stuff. So, I can't fault them for not getting a permit if it was done professionally. If anybody's gonna have their hand slapped, I think it should be the installer. But if you watch the video, and this gentleman that's having a problem with the fence is a friend of mine, which puts me in a weird spot, I've known him for years, he's a very nice guy. But he had a visitor at his house, which had a proclivity to, I don't wanna say force himself into a conversation with a woman, but he probably put himself in a spot where he shouldn't have been at a bad time in this lady's life after she lost her husband. And I would've, if I was, I would've recommended for her, I don't care if you have to build a brick wall 20 feet tall to protect yourself, that's what you should do in a case like that, and that's what she did. And that's why we have these approval of ordinance changes and exceptions to the rule. This, I would not like an eight-foot fence my neighbor put up against me. It hasn't happened yet, it could happen, but I wouldn't like it. And I'm not saying this in such a way, but you have the right to get in your hot tub, whether you're clothed or unclothed, whether you're with your kids or you're by yourself, or whether you're reading a book, whether you're, whatever you're doing, without being bothered by other people's eyes. And I think that in this case, with the position that this guy's upper deck is, that he can watch her, whether he wants to watch or not, it's human nature, you watch. So, I'm gonna absolutely have no problem with okaying this for these people.
Commissioner Decker, Mingus?
So, go ahead. I guess two things on this, I do agree with the mayor, six years is a long time to go by. I think the other thing, I guess my question would be, we're not really setting precedent, the precedent is that if you wanna establish a fence or put a fence in higher than six feet, you have to go get a special use for it. That's what the whole zoning board of appeals process is about, is if you wanna do something special, then you need to go to the city council and ask for it. So, we approve special uses, not every month, but quite frequently, we approve special uses. And those are all special situations where you could say we're setting precedent, we're not really setting precedent. The precedent is if you wanna do it, you have to go get a special use to do it. So, I'm not worried about precedent, if anybody else wants to do it, they need to follow the same procedure. It has been up for six years, it's a long time for something to be up and then all of a sudden say, hey, you need to take something down. So, I'll be supporting this for those few reasons.
Commissioner Decker?
Now, Scott, can I ask you a question? Is there a timeframe? This went six years, if it would've gone seven, if it would've gone eight, is there a timeframe where the city can no longer bring something down?
There's no specific timeframe for that, Commissioner, so the city can...
Not like a statute of limitations or something?
No, there's not a statute of limitations in this case that would apply to this kinda situation. So, the city can, you know, it's not always aware of every ordinance violation or zoning code violation that exists in the city. So, there's no specific requirement that they have to do within a certain time or they're somehow, that violation's grandfathered in, that's not, does not exist.
I do agree with what Mark is saying. And my first thought is, we can't allow people to go against code. And just, you know, they did it, doesn't necessarily, you know, got away with it at the time. However, the six years does make a difference. But one thing that I was thinking earlier, and then when Commissioner Sutherland said it, it really echoed in my mind, is when a professional, someone installs it for you, a company is supposed to... You trust when you're paying your money that they're doing everything appropriately. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote to allow them to keep it.
Very good. Roll call?
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Mayor Call? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Mingus?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's four ayes and one aye, so motion carried.
Okay. Be it resolved by the council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2526-027 here to attach, resolution accepting the proposal from Oil Marketing Equipment, Inc. For the Eastport Marina Tank Top Sump Replacement Project be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2526-027 be accepted on its first reading as read by the title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
We have evidently two new tank top sumps that are needed. And the Oil Marketing Equipment can provide those at a cost of $37,250.75. And so, it's in the best interest of the city to approve this resolution and do that work for the marina.
Yeah, and I'd just like to point out, this is something we've lucked out and we've gotten by for a number of years without replacing these. So, they're at their end of their life and that's, you know, understand that we get inspected on an annual basis down there as well. So, this'll bring us into compliance. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All president voting aye, your honor.
Very good, thank you, motion carried.
Be it resolved by the council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2526-018 here to attach, resolution approving additional revisions to the city's group health plan for the 2526 plan year be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2526-018 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
I'm gonna try to explain some of this, I may go to Scott at some point as well. We've recently updated the city's group healthcare plan in a prior meeting. And in part of that plan, there was a mandate that came down from the state that required health, mental health services for our first responders. And we covered that in that plan. Well, the committee on insurance and benefits committee has come back now with a revision to that plan and they wanna add something in addition to that. That addition is adding some licensed clinical professionals, counselors, and outside... What it comes down to, they would be outside of our network, which would increase the number of costs to the city and really be, I'll say, covered by the taxpayers in this particular case, where this additional cost now is above and beyond the requirement of the statutory. I mean, we view mental health as important and we're providing those mental health counseling services. So, this addition is, in my opinion, outside and in addition. So, with that being said, that is on the recommendation from the, I should state first, recommendation from the health, the benefits and health committee is to pass this in addition. But based on what I just said there, that we're already providing the level of service that we're required and this is going to be an additional burden on the city because it's gonna incur cost outside of our plan and outside of our network. I will not be supporting that tonight. Scott, would you like to provide any further, better description of the statutory? Or it was the, where'd I have the, oh, the Illinois Public Act 103-1011? And then where this additional request is coming from?
Yes, Commissioner, so the insurance committee did meet as you've indicated. This resolution does two things, it corrects a mistake from the initial change that adds in counselors. And the second thing is, as you spoke about, adds an exception, not a, adds additional benefit for receiving these services outside the city's network at a much lower cost. So, as you've explained, I think you adequately discussed it, that it does have those two components. So, we can talk about those further if need be, but that's the two aspects of this resolution. One is making a correction and part two is then adding that provision that would essentially make this similar to what is found inside the network. So, to explain this a little broader, I know I'm kinda, maybe not being broad enough. This public act requires the city to provide a health plan that gives first responders mental health services. You kinda mentioned that, at no cost to the member. And so, that's being done within the city's network. The correction was just the listed professionals who can provide that services, that's being, is part of that, that's part of this resolution. The second part is essentially making this similar to, if this was a benefit within the provider network, right now, if you had an office visit for any kinda medical service, including mental health service, the participant would pay $40 per session. That's, you know, there's a few exceptions when it's covered 100%. This is one for first responders. What the committee is, has recommended is that if the provider is outside the network, then they essentially get the in-network price, which would be that $40 copay. So, that's part two of what's going on, I know it's, so I try to break those out, but that's the two things that are happening with this resolution, so.
So, I have a question, because you're referring to one part being a correction.
Right.
So, which correction, which part was not correct the first time?
The corrections that's being made is the type of professionals who can provide the counseling services.
Is that a correction or is that a change?
That's a correction.
Just a correction and the, it doesn't impact the overall, has nothing to do with the ask in itself of including these outside professional services, even though they're out of network, is what Scott changed today. It listed one of the service providers incorrectly, he changed that term. That's all he changed.
Okay.
And I'll make a few comments on this. And I really don't care how it's viewed. One of the questions you asked Scott, and I don't wanna put Scott in an awkward position. So, people need to understand with an insurance committee, that's comprised of some of the city's representatives and then some of the employee representatives. The city representatives are far outnumbered by the employee representatives. So, let's walk it back a little bit. The state of Illinois, like they love to do, because it's easy to be a hero in Springfield today when you don't have to pay for anything, so I'm gonna go there with this. They came down with an unfunded mandate. Once again, the local government's on the hook for paying for that mandate. We did that. We approved, we added these mental health services that are provided absolutely in-network. We had one police officer that found an out-of-network counselor that they would like to have. And that individual sits on this insurance committee and found a way to get the committee to jump on board with coming back to the city with an additional ask. It is absolutely above and beyond what we're required to do. And I will not be supporting it. I'm kind of irritated if people haven't figured that out, that this is brought before council in the first place because we had this conversation behind closed doors, they were told this. And just because the insurance committee that's been around a long time brings forward a recommendation and the council has always supported the recommendation, doesn't guarantee each and every time that the council has to do that. The decision on monetary things like this lies with this city council. And they were told that's the council's decision, which individually, we've all talked about it and we're all on the same page. I'm not telling anyone how to vote tonight, you vote however you want, I will not be supporting it. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I, for me, it's... Yeah, Mayor, I, for me, it's, we do the negotiations, or the committee gets together and they submit a proposal. The city council approves once a year, and I don't, we don't usually go outside of that. If this were a different situation, for instance, if the mental health professionals that were in our network all dropped out of our network for some reason, I could see that. I could see coming forward, because that would be a totally different situation. But I think the appropriate time for this conversation is during that time, because if it is during the, the normal time that we would have it, it would be considered in our yearly budgetary process about how much the city would have to spend, as well as it would be factored into the employee rates. And I'm someone who, not now, but I had that insurance for a long time. It, it would be factored into that, because the employees share a cost of the overall plan. This being done outside of that is separate. So if, if this wants to be, if they want to bring this up next year, and the insurance committee brings it forward with the plan as a whole, I'll look at it differently. But tonight, I'll vote no.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
No.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Mingus?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Mayor Call?
No.
All present are voting no, Your Honor.
Very good. Mission, uh, motion fails.
Whereas a vacancy exists on the East Peoria Housing Authority Board of Directors as a result of member Tammy Meishner retiring at the end of her term on April 30th, 2025. And whereas Mr. the Honorable Mayor John P. Call has recommended the appointment of Jim McIntyre to fill the vacancy of the East Peoria Housing Authority Board of Directors, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city of East Peoria to confirm and approve such appointment. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that the appointment by Mayor John P. Call of Jim McIntyre to the East Peoria Housing Authority Board of Directors to fill the vacancy of such board, of such boards for a term beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2030, by hereby confirmed and approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution Number 2526-020 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Well, as it's self-explaining, we're appointing Jim McIntyre. The one thing I can say is I have interacted with Jim McIntyre for years in the community on different facets, whether he was working at the bank, and I was working within volunteer organizations that were doing business with the bank, but also when we set up the Teresa Tracy Trot, we consulted with him, having run some of the Felipe Race and some others. He actually trained our organization on how to, how to score a race. So Jim has been connected, connected and committed to this community. So I think he'll be a wonderful asset in this capacity of volunteering on this board.
Very good. Any discussion?
Mayor, I want to say thank you for, to Tammy for all of her work, for so long. She's been such a valuable member of a bunch of areas of the community, but especially this. And it, I'm thankful that Jim is willing to step in as well. He'll do a great job.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. Tammy and her husband have been very involved in the community and will still continue to be involved, just in other areas. So appreciate her service, and Jim's willingness to step up. And I too have dealt with Jim for a long time, and great guy, and appreciate his willingness to serve. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I, I'm surprised it took Jim this long to get off the damn couch after he retired to do something. I'm glad he's back.
I don't think he was on the couch that much.
No, he was, he was, he did a lot of traveling.
Yeah.
Yeah. But he, he's, he's always been community oriented, and, and I'm glad he's jumped back in frying pan again.
Yeah. He, Commissioner Hill and I, we tapped his knowledge many, many years ago, starting the Teresa Tracy organization up with that first annual run. He was a tremendous help, as someone that was a big runner and advocate and had the experience. He kind of guided us along, didn't ask for anything in return. So, great guy. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Your Honor, that completes it for me tonight.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Decker?
I have three items tonight, Mayor. First of all, Resolution Number 2526-021, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois. The Resolution Number 2526-021 here to attach, a resolution approving change order with Illinois Civil Contractors Incorporated for the East Washington Street ADA Ramps and Sidewalks Improvement Project for Moll Street, Anna Street, and Springfield Road Intersections be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you to this Resolution Number 2526-021 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspections.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. This one, I was speaking with the new superintendent, Brett Tucker, about this, and it comes down to, you know, we hate to see overruns or come back and ask for more money, but this is one of those cases that I believe that will be cost-effective as, as compared to fixing the issues that they found, you know, later on. The increase is $66,520.01. When they start large projects like this, they always find things that they didn't maybe expect beforehand. And this is one of those issues, that they found numerous things. They could have maybe did some patchwork and things like that, but when you're doing this large and great of a project, you want to do it once, do it correctly, and don't have to come back in a couple of years and, and make patches to it.
Well said. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to throw in a little something here. ICCI is one of these companies that we don't have problems with. And we don't, and if we have a problem or a question, they answer the question, explain it to us, or they fix the problem. And I'm going to be very attentive to contractors, more attentive than before, because we've had some, some, some problems with some contractors in the last couple, two or three years. And I'm going to be very vocal about it. And ICCI is a stand-up company, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Motion carried.
Next, Mayor, Resolution Number 2526-025, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois. The Resolution Number 2526-025 here to attach, a resolution approving purchase of a new John Deere mowing tractor for the Public Works Streets Department from Heritage Tractor LLC be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution Number 2526-025 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. As I was reading that, I noticed it said new. And it is very, very new to us, but it does have 300 hours on it. It was a, I think, a leased vehicle by IDOT. But the amount of money, Brett believed that this would have cost somewhere between $140,000 to $160,000 if not for those 300 hours. But the selling price is $115,500. The suggested list price is 120. But we did get a warranty. We had a trade-in value of our current tractor was $23,500. So it leaves a balance of $95,279. This, one thing that Mr. Tucker was explaining to me is the difference in power from this unit as compared to our previous. This one, as he said, the other one had to work really hard to do the same job. So we're anxious to get this. It'll be a lot safer for our employees. It has the enclosed cab, so if any of you know anything about mowing in a setting like that, unfortunately, things, people throw things out their windows, and whether it be oil bottles, or whoever knows what else, and the blades hit it, it could spray up onto the person. So fortunately, in this cab, that won't happen. But we're looking forward to getting this.
A couple of other points worth noting prior to discussion. Actually, the next item will be related to the purchase of the new tractor. Once we sell these other pieces of equipment, that money will go towards the purchase of the new tractor as well. With this new tractor, it's a much larger tractor, can cover a lot more area. So I know it's a sore subject with a lot of people on areas of, that are maintained in city limits, and I always try to explain to people some of those areas, a lot of those areas, that are not well-maintained are actually IDOTS.
That's right.
We don't have the authority to maintain those areas, and they only do it twice a year, for the record, unless more and more people complain outside of the mayor of East Peoria. Falls on deaf ears anymore, but nonetheless, we have a lot more areas that we do maintain, and this will certainly be a more efficient, timely way to better maintain those areas. So I'd encourage the council to support this. Discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Last, Mayor, Ordnance Number 4861. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Ordnance Number 4861 here to attach, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property in the possession of the East Peoria Public Works Street Department, be read at length by the clerk, and that said ordinance, Number 4861, be accepted on its first reading, and be hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you like to ring of that?
Yeah, it's great. Whereas the city's Public Works Streets Department is in possession of various vehicles and other equipment identified at Exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference the excess Public Works vehicles and equipment, and whereas the Public Works Streets Department has determined that the excess Public Works vehicles and equipment are no longer useful for city operations by either the Public Works Streets Department or any other city departments, and are therefore surplus city property. And whereas retaining the excess Public Works vehicles and equipment is not necessary or useful to or in the best interests of the city. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tassell County, Illinois, that Section 1, the Superintendent of Streets in consultation with the mayor, is hereby authorized and directed to sell the excess Public Works vehicles and equipment under such terms and condition as he deems appropriate with or without advertising sale. If the city is unable to sell any of the excess Public Works vehicles and equipment after undertaking reasonable efforts to do so, the superintendent may dispose of the unsold vehicles in any manner as seem fit and within the discretion of the superintendent. Section 2, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, and said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available public inspection in the future, and in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section 3, the ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject, and shall be construed therewith, excepting as that part in direct conflict with any other ordinance, and in the event of such conflict, the provisions hereof shall govern. Section 4, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and 10-day period of publication in a manner provided by law.
Very good. Thank you, Deputy Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. A couple of things that I wanted to mention. We have a list of things here, and it was like an old paver, and a Ford Escape, and old plow truck. But when I asked him about, he's selling, or they're selling them mainly on, I think it's govdeals.com, but they do have a minimum price that they want to accept for it. And so I said, well, what happens if they don't get that? And really, we're hoping to get more than, than scrap. Otherwise, we will be forced to do that. But the, he said some of these pieces of equipment are ones that maybe smaller communities or smaller businesses that, that could get them, maybe put some money into them, and, and get some good use out of them. They, they could be pretty valuable. But for us, as much as we use them, and as, with all of our hills, they're just inherently hard on them, it, it just doesn't, it's not cost-effective anymore for us to put more money into the, these vehicles. Looking forward to getting rid of them.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, Commissioner Sutherland.
Uh, yeah. I have a couple of things tonight. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria that Resolution Number 2526-024, Resolution Approving Change Order with NAP Concrete Contractors for the Summit Sewer Line Repair Project be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution Number 2526-024 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Okay. We had, I'm going to say a sewer collapse, but a sewer collapse usually happens when the sewer falls apart and collapses on itself, and it clogs the system up. In this case, the sewer actually collapsed. It, we took a walk in the woods and found a, I believe it was a 16-inch diameter sewer, about 12 feet below where it was, where the creek had washed it out. And we went in at our expense and fixed it. When I say our expense, we are hooked up to Washington at the other end of the sewer line, just a few hundred yards away for their overflow in case they have a problem with their pumps. So if they have a problem with their pumps, their sewer comes into our sewer system, and that's the agreement that they made years ago without, how can I say, financial agreements in the future. So this is all on us. And what caused this sewer line to collapse is because of the Corps of Engineers wanted to control the creek to keep it from flooding out and causing problems as the water got closer and closer to the Illinois River to protect Caterpillar. Totally understandable. But a few decades ago, they walked away from this project. And when they walked away from this project, they had earthen dams, and they had concrete dams. And I'm going into a long explanation over a few bucks here, because I want everybody to know what's going on. And they refused to upkeep the earthen dams, which has caused the creek to erode faster than ever before because of the subdivisions that's going in in East Peoria and Washington, and all the streets, and there's no saturation in the ground off of people's roofs, and the streets and the sidewalks, and it goes straight into the, the storm sewer, and straight down into the creek, and it's, it's a rush. It's, it's like a thunder when you're down there, and it's raining. It's not a babbling brook anymore. It's a thunder. And we had a piece of the dam that caused partial of our sewer to collapse. It's a big piece of concrete, probably, at one point, it was about three-quarters the width of this room. And I looked at it from about 30 feet up above. It's probably eight feet thick and 12 feet tall, and it's laying washed out in the creek and pushing the water against where we don't want the water to go. So to protect this new pipe that we put in, we have to go in, and when we found this, it was, it was a mess back there. They put a nice road in going back there. You couldn't see five foot in front of you back there when we found this pipe washed out. Now that you can see what's going on, this is an extra. It had to be broken up to keep the, the water from pushing up against our, our pipes that were right around the corner. And then we took the concrete and placed it up against the walls of the creek to help, which is not going to solve it. It's not. We need to take a look at this problem. Since the Corps of Engineers walked away, somebody's got to pick up the ball. I hope it's not us, but it's protecting our sewer. So we placed this big riprap concrete up, up against the wall, and, and it took, a big, a big excavator with a big breaker. I've got some big equipment in my arsenal, and if I would have brought my big my biggest tractor over with my biggest breaker, I wouldn't have been able to even touch it. So, they had some big equipment, they did a great job, and they did it at a reasonable price, so I'm all for this.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner, for the explanation. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, your honor.
Very good, motion carried.
My last thing today, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4860 hereto attached, an ordinance allowing retrofit of existing mobile home parks with new mobile homes meeting current mobile home construction standards, be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, and laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Um, this subject has been not near and dear to my heart, but it's been a project of mine, because the mobile homes that used to survive and thrive in East Peoria are dying on the vine, and I'm probably going to offend maybe somebody, but because of bad decisions made in the past, because of East Peoria felt that they didn't want mobile home parks and that kind of housing in our community. Well, when they found out that they got rid of the first mobile home park in East Peoria above the old site gas station over by the expressway, it's never been able to be utilized. There's acres up there that a house could be put up there, or some sort of, something could go on up there in housing, but because of the EPA rules and regulations to do with the old sewer lines from the mobile homes, and the water lines, and the infrastructure problems, having to take that stuff out of the ground to be able to start anew would cost so many hundreds of thousands of dollars, that if we lose our mobile home parks, they're just going to set vacant. Wherever there was a mobile home, a park is just going to be an empty lot, I do believe, for nearly eternity. So, we need to help the mobile home parks back upon their feet by allowing them to put in new mobile homes, of which we didn't allow a new mobile home to go in. So if you rented, if you had a mobile home in a lot and then decided to go out and shop for a new mobile home, and you came home and said, honey, I'm here, and you towed the old mobile home out and brought the new mobile home in, we wouldn't approve it, because it didn't meet our standards. Now with this, it's well-written, it's possible for a new mobile home to be brought in, and I'm gonna, we don't have to worry about their streets, they upkeep their own streets, we don't have to worry about their sewer, they keep care of their own sewer throughout their whole community, we don't have to worry about their water, they take care of their own water, they take care of their own snow plowing, they are an independent neighborhood which doesn't need us, and I'm all for this change.
Very good, discussion?
Well, I just want to, you know, Commissioner Sutherland had brought it up, this interest in this project, as he called it. Now, we do have, and I can't speak for our forefathers, because I have no idea why they changed the rules, some of them were building code changes over the years as far as what we currently have, if you wanted to create a new mobile home park, if we allow it, there's totally different standards for sewer sizes and spacing. So, when he mentioned this, you know, I'm open to hear what, I'm open to hear what he comes up with, or what he thinks, but we want to be careful not to, let's say, create situations in these older parks where they're, I would say they're unsafe, because again, they're on a totally different old standard. Now, I'm supportive of what Commissioner Sutherland and the legal staff has come up with, because it does give an avenue, many of our, what we have, a handful, some people don't even know where some of them are, and they're total ice horses, and some of it might maybe, some of them look really bad with this ordinance, that, you know, I don't say they can start their own cleanup, internal cleanup, because I've seen it in other mobile home parks, not in the city, where they went through an effort to cleanse and get rid of, I mean, some of them are just dilapidated. So, this, as he stated, it's meant to be, I'll call it grandfathered in, existing mobile home parks, there's some exceptions that are going to be allowed in order to, you know, allow them to put a new, refreshed one, and as he stated in some of his materials, whether he stated tonight, you know, it's a market, housing market that, you know, could help situations in our housing availability. So, with that, I'm going to be accepting, supporting Commissioner's efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland, he's put a lot of work into this. I think he first talked to me about a mic, what, about three months ago or so?
Yeah.
So I appreciate the effort, and I will admit, I'm one that, because of the way I view that some owners of parks allowed their parks to become, you know, rundown, and I thought at times, taking advantage of some of the tenants, and I hate to see that, I was on the other side of this. However, I didn't know the history, as Commissioner Sutherland pointed out, and some of the problems, I think that, not intentionally, but I think they had good intentions, but it created an issue that they would hold on to the homes that they had as long as they possibly could, even though they couldn't repair them correctly, because they had no real means of bringing in another. So, and I think that his point is valid, that is fair view, is what he's talking about, that was, it was there, and nothing's been able to be done with the property since the last homes came out of there. So, I commend him, and I'm going to support this tonight as well.
Very good, Commissioner.
Yeah, just, I know Commissioner Sutherland worked hard on this, and I commend him for his efforts on it, I'll be supporting it as well.
So I'll commend Commissioner Sutherland for pushing it, and then I'm going to give Scott a lot of credit for drafting it, but no, in all seriousness, I know this has been something personal for him, and I've always said on this council floor, don't sit up there and beat your chest and complain about city ordinances, if there's change, bring forward the change that you want to see in the ordinance, which is what is in front of us tonight. So, good job, Commissioner, thank you, Scott. Talking to staff, the fire chief, building inspector, code enforcement, Ty Livingston, they've all worked lock and stuff to bring forward these changes to make this happen, so I appreciate it. And just another thing to point out, there's a new owner of the wagon wheel, which is a mobile home park, and he's already been working with Ty and the staff, and looking forward to these changes, so they can make some much-needed improvements to that mobile home park, so I will be supporting this as well. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Your honor, that's all I have tonight.
All right, Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Mingus?
Yeah, I've got a handful of items tonight, your honor. First one, Resolution Number 2526-026, whereas vacancy exists on the East Peoria Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees, and whereas the Honorable Mayor John P. Call has recommended the appointment of Steve Matheny to fill the vacancy on the East Peoria Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees, whereas it is in the best interest of the city of East Peoria to confirm and approve such appointment, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, the appointment of Mayor John P. Call of Steve Matheny to the East Peoria Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees, fill the vacancy on such board for a term ending April 30th of 2026, be hereby confirmed and approved, and that this Resolution Number 2526-026 be adopted as presented. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this Resolution, that Resolution Number 2526-026 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
So this is kind of, as Commissioner Hill said when he had his appointment, this is exactly what it is, it's a motion to put Steve Matheny on the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees, I've known Steve for a lot of years, and he'll do a great job on that board.
Yeah, and he's well in tune with some of the other members of the board, so we've had this vacancy for probably a couple of years, if not longer. Steve just most recently got off the District 309 School Board, which he was a member of that board for probably twenty years, and said he wasn't going to do anything else, but one conversation leads to the next, and next thing you know, he's on the agenda, so, thank you, Steve, for your willingness to step up. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
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 Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next two items, your honor, are both, I'm going to say, bittersweet to people who are retiring, who have done a lot of service for the city, deserve a great retirement, but we're going to really miss both of them. So, first one is Resolution 2425-022, whereas Jill Peterson has been continuously employed by the city from June 22nd, 1998, through the end of the day on June 30th, 2025, most recently occupying the position of Administrative Assistant, whereas Jill Peterson announced her intention to retire from employment effective July 1, 2025, and whereas the city is appreciative of long and continued service provided by Jill Peterson, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to execute the attached separation agreement, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, the above recitals are found to be true and correct, Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the separation agreement with such changes as the mayor in his sole discretion may decide are in the best interest of the city of East Peoria. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Resolution Number 2526-022 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. As I said, this is a separation agreement for Jill Peterson, she's been with the city since 1998, I was thinking she's been with the city about as long as I can remember being involved in the city, so Jill's done a great job, I've worked with her, being Commissioner of the Fire Department, Jill has done a lot for that department, she's done a lot for the city, we're going to truly miss her, wish her the best in retirement, and I was looking just for a matter of record that we always say with them, with these two, Jill's separation agreement is one installment, $10,282.1.
Very good. I'd just like to point out, Jill was in to see us today, because Lisa needed her help on something, and Jill asked me as she's getting ready to leave, she said, how is that going to go tonight? I said, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody about your retirement, so it might be contentious. I just need three votes, Jill, you better start getting some phone calls, mate. No, she's done a great job, twenty-seven years. Discussion?
If we say no, Mayor, does she have to come afterward?
She should have really, she should have shown up, just saying.
I know. I'll tell you, she has been just a great person to work with, being on the Fire Department with her, she was at first at Eastside, and she had a bunch of jobs, and then she came to the Fire Department, and man, to take a bunch of adult children, sometimes, the Fire Department, and she did such a good job of helping us with the things that we couldn't take care of, I mean, she managed everything for us, and just was a staple in the department, fit in very well, I don't know how she, you know, if she knew what to expect when she came there, but she, her personality fit in well, she was great to have in the office, and just a good person. I will say too, outside of that, for instance, the Vietnam Wall that we brought here last year and one other time before, I don't know if it would have happened this last time without her. The amount of effort that she did was helping on the side, and helping keep my mind straight, and the things that I needed to remember, so it's just a great asset to the community, and wish her a lot of great fun, and luck in her retirement, but going to miss her.
Very good, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I knew Jill before my involvement here at the city, we had children in school at the same time, but Jill has, I didn't work with her as the fire admin, but being that she was also, she wore many hats, the communicator, you know, she was one of our main communicators, our social media manager, and most important, she also helped promote the farmer's market, so, you know, Jill, I wish you best of luck in your retirement, and all the work, and she never said no, and she was always willing to jump in, so, good luck.
Yeah, very good. Any other comments, discussion?
No, I can, all I can say about Jill is, she was a stand-up person, and every time I asked her to do something, she did it with enthusiasm to the best of her ability, and she did a great job.
Yeah, she's still a stand-up person, I don't want people to think that something happened to her, but no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she, I can just imagine what she's saying right now, probably watching this, hey, hey, I'm still here. No, but in all seriousness, she did wear many hats, and was a big contributor to the festival of lights for all these years as well, so, anyway, wish her well in her retirement, and she says she's going to stay close, and I'm pretty sure she'd help us out if we needed it, so. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present are voting aye, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next item, your honor, Resolution 2526-023, whereas Teresa Derm has been continuously employed by the city from July 6, 1989, through the end of the day on July 3, 2025, most recently occupying the position of HR Director, whereas Teresa Derm has announced her intention to retire from employment effective July 7, 2025, and whereas the city is appreciative of the long and continued service provided by Teresa Derm, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to execute the attached separation agreement, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, the above recitals are found to be true and correct, Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the separation agreement with such changes as the mayor in his sole discretion may decide are in the best interest of the city of East Peoria. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Resolution Number 2526-023 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
So, we just talked about Jill, 1998, Teresa's been employed by the city since 1989, Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe as of today, she is the longest-employed.
That's debatable between her and Lynn White in public works.
Your current?
Yeah, I honestly don't know. Lisa, we hand out the service pins every year, is it about a tight race? Okay, because there are some broken service on one of them.
Yes, Lynn had some broken service there.
But either way, thirty-seven years.
One of the top two longest-tenured employees in the city, so she's been here a very long time, Teresa does a lot of things for the city and does a lot of things well, we're going to truly miss her, anybody who comes in City Hall, I mean, she's always working on something, and I mean, she does HR, she takes care of a lot, a lot of, a lot of things I'd say that are tied to HR, but maybe even loosely tied, that her job responsibilities are very, have a large scope, so, I've known Teresa, like I said, ever since I can remember, not only being involved in the city, but my dad being involved in the city, we're going to really miss her, and I wish her the best in retirement.
Yeah, and then...
Oh, yes, for matter of record, hers is one payment at fifty-one thousand, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So when you retire after thirty-seven years, that's what that looks like. Discussion?
I, believe, Mayor, she may have started even in high school, or like...
Yeah, she started as an intern.
Yeah, she, another staple, one of those people that, all you have to do is say her first name, and everybody expects that that's who you're talking about, because she's done so many things for this community, she's HR Director, and, but she controlled all of the benefits, an enormous amount of work, and she's a really good person as well, so, just like Jill, going to really look forward to, I'm sure she's looking forward to retirement, I wish her the best in her retirement, but we're going to miss her as well.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, wish Teresa, wish her well, anybody that commits to thirty years to one organization in their life deserves high accolades, and she's worked in an HR department for quite some time, as Commissioner Decker, you know, also the benefit coordinator, so she has a lot of hats even within that HR department, so, wish her the best of luck, she's done a great job, look, hopefully she has a great time in the next phase of her life.
Very good. Commissioner?
Yeah, I can, I've known her for many, many years, we haven't been really close until the last six years when I took this position, and there's, she's got an infectious laugh about her, and I would have to, if I had to sum her up in one word, I would say responsible. She was a very responsible person, and she had a lot of responsibility, and she did a good job.
Yeah, I just, you know, obviously being in this office for the past six years full-time, HR falls under the mayor, and, you know, it bothered me as a commissioner that there was only one person in HR, we have two hundred and some employees, at any given point during the year, it's upwards of two hundred and four... At any given point during the year, it's upwards of two hundred and forty employees, and coming from the private sector, I'm used to an HR department with fourteen people managing three hundred or four hundred employees. I was absolutely dumbfounded that that burden fell solely on our shoulders. So then Lisa, who's the mayor's admin, is her official title, she stepped up a few years ago and kind of helped with the onboarding, offboarding, some of the HR responsibilities to relieve that burden. But I give her a lot of credit, thirty-seven years in putting up with some of this stuff she has HR-related. But no, I greatly appreciate her service. We're going to miss having her around. We wish her well, and I'm sure she's not, knowing her, she's not just going to sit around and not do anything. She's probably got plans come July 8th, if I had to guess, after vacation maybe. But no, she's done a phenomenal job and we just added a second HR person full-time. Jill retired, Lisa took over some of Jill's responsibilities, we had a shift, but we got another HR person in there back in February, Megan, and she's helped Teresa out. But obviously, she's done a lot on her own for all those years, self-taught, and greatly appreciate her service in all the capacity she's held in thirty-seven years. It hasn't just been HR, that's where she's retiring out of, so, wish her well. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All President voting aye, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you, motion carried.
Next item, Your Honor, Ordinance Number 4864. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Ordinance Number 4864 here to attach, an ordinance amending the vicious and dangerous dog provisions of East Peoria City Code and related procedures regarding the empowerment of dangerous and vicious dogs. Be read at link by the clerk, and the said ordinance, Number 4864, be accepted on its first reading and hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Whereas city officials have become aware of recent unprovoked attacks by dogs that are running at large off the dog's owner's property that has resulted in the death of another person, dog, and pets, and whereas Section 10-2-1.1 of the East Peoria City Code defines the term dangerous dog and vicious dog, and whereas Section 10-2-5.5 sets out the empowerment and destruction procedure of a vicious dog, and whereas the City Council hereby finds that dogs engaging in unprovoked attacks and that are not on the dog owner's property are a public nuisance and a threat to the safety and well-being of other persons and their pets and companion animals, and whereas the City Council seeks to implement a more efficient and effective procedure for dealing with vicious dogs, and whereas the City Council finds the adoption of the proposed amendments to Sections 10.2.1.1 and 10-2-5.5 of the East Peoria City Code will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the city, its citizens, and the general public, and that said amendments are in the best interest in the City of East Peoria and its citizens. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, the definition of dangerous dog and vicious dog in Section 1.1 of Title 10, Chapter 2, are hereby amended to read as follows. Additions by underline, deletions by strikeout. Section 10-2-1.1, definition, dangerous dog means, one, any individual dog anywhere other than upon the property of the owner or custodian of the dog and unmuzzled, unleashed, unattended by its owners or custodian that behaves in manner that its responsible person would believe poses a serious and unjustified imminent threat of serious physical injury or death to a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet, or, two, a dog that without justification bites a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet and does not cause serious physical injury, or, three, a dog that without justification menaces a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet in a manner that a reasonable person would believe possesses a justified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet. Any law enforcement, any law enforcement officer or animal control officer employed by or under contract with the city who conducts an investigation can deem a single event as dangerous dog event. Written notice that a dog has been deemed a dangerous dog shall be provided to the owner of the dog by the law enforcement officer or animal control officer upon completion of the investigation. Vicious dog means a dog that without justification attacks a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet, and causes serious physical or death to the person or animal, or any individual dog that has been found to be a dangerous dog upon three separate occasions. No dog shall be deemed vicious if it bites, attacks, or menaces a trespasser on the property of its owner, anyone assaulting its owner, anyone who has tormented or abused it, or is a professionally trained dog used for law enforcement or guard duties. Section 2, Title 10, Chapter 2, Section 5.5 is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 10-2-5.5, Empowerment. A, any vicious dog which is not properly confined shall be impounded by the law enforcement authority having jurisdiction in such area provided, however, that if the city animal control officer or any city police officer reasonably use that such dog poses an immediate threat of severe injury to any person, companion animal, or other domestic animal or pet. Such officials can authorize to kill such dog. Any vicious dog found to be running at large by any member of the Police Department of the municipality shall be presumed to be in violation of this section and shall be subject to empowerment. Any vicious dog found to have without justification attacked a person, companion animal, or domestic animal or pet, and causes serious physical injury or death to the person or animal shall be subject to immediate impound. Any dangerous dog found to have without justification bitten a person, companion animal, or domestic animal... or pet which does not result in serious physical injury may be subject to immediate empowerment and subject to the provisions or subsection B of this section. B, if the incident giving rise to the empowerment has resulted in an injury to a person, companion animal, or other domestic animal or pet upon empowerment by the Police Department, the Chief of Police or designated shall notify the rabies control administrator of the county pursuant to 510 ILCS 5/12, and shall transfer control of the vicious dog to the administrator in accordance with 510 ILCS 5-13. C, any dog which attacks a human being, companion animal, or other domestic animal or pet may be ordered destroyed in an expeditious and humane manner. When, aye, in the mayor or mayor's designated judgment, such dog represents a continuing threat of serious harm to human beings, companion animals, or other domestic animals, or, two, in the judgment, court's judgment, such dog represents a continuing threat of serious harm to human beings, companion animals, or other domestic animals or pets. However, prior to the destruction of the dog, control of the dog must be transferred to the administrator pursuant of subsection B of this section. D, any vicious dog which has previously been impounded for not properly being confined or for running at large in violation of this section, or which has previously bitten or attacked a human being, companion animal, or other domestic animal or pet without provocation, shall be ordered destroyed in an expeditious and humane manner upon any subsequent violations or those subsections, or upon any subsequent unprovoked attack or bite. E, any dog which attacks a human being, companion animal, or other domestic animal or pet, except a dog listed in Section 10-2-1.1, which results in severe injuries, shall automatically be destroyed in an expeditious and humane manner. Section 3, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, and said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future and in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section 4, the ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject and shall be construed therewith accepting as to that part indirect conflict with any other ordinance, and in the event of such conflict, the provisions shall govern. Section 5, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and ten-day period of publication in the matter provided by law.
Thank you, Deputy Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Madam Clerk. So, we talked about this at the beginning of the council meeting, Mr. Leenhopp, correct, addressed and put his support behind this. This really came from a tragic event that happened at his residence a month ago, maybe, I don't remember the exact date, but he contacted me and then we talked on the phone and I contacted the mayor and got him in touch with the mayor because we needed to do something different with our, with our ordinance, especially when it came to vicious dogs. So, this ordinance is, it's changing the ordinance, it's adding some, some language around, and I'm just going to read right off of Scott's memo, but it expands the definition of both a vicious dog and a dangerous dog to expressly include unprovoked dog attacks on another person's dog or pet. Further situations when unprovoked dog attacks on another person's dog or pet do occur, the empowerment and destruction procedures in the East Peoria City Code are being revised and expanded to also include those situations as well. So I think Scott did a nice job in the memo of wrapping that up. But this, this is the result of a tragic event. Mr. Leenhopp did the correct thing, which is contact the city. We move quickly to try to make sure that this doesn't happen to another family, and if it does, that there is some type, something can be done about it and that our ordinance is protected. So, I give Mr. Leenhopp a lot of credit for saying something, and the mayor, I know, worked to get this expedited and get this done quickly. So we're doing this in one reading. That's why Lisa read it at length so that it'll be, it'll take effect even sooner so we don't have to do a second reading in a couple weeks.
Well said. Any discussion?
I'm sorry this happened, you know, there's nothing that we can do that will take away from what happened or make it better. It's a shame that we didn't think of this ahead of time, but it's terrible, terrible thing that happened, and I just, I feel terrible for your family.
Yeah, any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Was it a pit bull that, that did they hurt?
No, I don't think so.
Was it?
It was a pit bull?
Pit bull mix, I believe. Two, there were two dogs involved that killed the family's pet, the other neighbor's.
Well, I don't, I don't think it really matters if it was a pit bull, if it did damage, but pit bulls are notorious for, you know, defending whatever they think they're defending in their brain and hurting or killing whatever they, they attack. So, I totally agree with this. I think that, that this is what society's come to. We have to have three or four pages read aloud, but I say, yeah, let's just do it, get it over with, do it.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All President voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Final item, Your Honor, Resolution Number 2526-019. Be resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that a permit for public exhibition of fireworks be held on July 4, 2025, rain date of July 5, 2025, to Midwest Communications, Inc., Pyrotechnic Fireworks, Inc., in connection with the Fourth of July fireworks. That choose greater Peoria red, white, and boom in East Peoria, Illinois be further resolved, that the thirty-dollar license fee required by Section 3-4-6 of the City Code is hereby waived, and that this Resolution Number 2526-019 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. This is pretty self-explanatory. This is the permit so that we can do the red, white, and boom on July 4, and looking forward, the mayor already touched on that earlier today as well, but looking forward to a great event. It's, it's one of the best events, if not the state, the nation.
It's the largest in the state and the top two percent in the nation. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All President voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good, lengthy agenda. Anyone wish to make a public comment on anything non-agenda related? See no takers? Once, twice? Okay, very good. Comments from the council? Commissioner Decker?
I want to invite everybody out to the Fourth of July celebration. It's always nice. I know our police and fire and Public Works do a great job of preparing for it. I think it's a very safe environment here in East Peoria, and I'm just, I look forward to it and hope that everybody comes out and joins us.
Very good. Commissioner Hill?
Okay, we're going into week three of the farmer's market. Unfortunately, last week, we had threatening and bad weather, and the meteorologist Mark here has to make a call based at one o'clock, and sometimes it goes our way, sometimes it doesn't. Fortunately, in the...
It's fifty-fifty.
Yeah, well, it might be more than fifty-fifty. I've unfortunately made a decision to go with it, and we've got, you know, over the last five years, a thunderstorm or two, but anyway, week three, the vendors, we have a, you know, consistent base, and then some of the others roll in and roll out, so please come out. Now, it is going to be hot, so it's going to be warm on Friday, but just be thankful it's not Saturday because the nineties start come Saturday. So come on out, four to seven on Friday, it's right across the street in the walkway here. Pedestrian, something.
Pedestrian spying.
Yeah.
Pedestrian spying. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sutherland?
Yeah, I got a couple things. When, when we have problems with zoning, it's, how can I say? I'm not really for sure if it was a lack of thought in the past or it was a lack of oversight as it went on, but I just want to, this council and this, the citizens of this city to be aware, and it's not going to be a popular thing I'm going to talk about, but there are half a dozen places in East Peoria where, and I believe it's spelled O-R-I-O-N Alley, it's in between the turn-run circle, that I have a sewer main going down people's backyards. And if we had to mow it, we couldn't mow it, we can't even walk it because of people's fences that are on the easement right-of-way. People have sheds, I mean, really nice sheds built on the easement right-of-way, and there is a swimming pool or two that's built right up to the easement right-of-way in such a way that if I had to dig down ten or twelve feet, the pool would collapse. So, I think this is going to be a future problem if we don't send a polite letter to each one of these households that says, "If you are going to replace the pool, don't put it back in the wrong place," because I don't want somebody to spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars and then us get up in arms and then have a pissing match back and forth. I, I think that the people that put up sheds and stuff like that, I just believe that they should be warned by a letter or a door knocked on because if some people don't understand that there's even a utility easement behind their house. I mean, generational people buy and sell houses, buy and sell houses, they don't ask what's fifteen feet under the ground when they buy the house, they just don't. I'm going to go outside of my billywhack, and I'm going to probably embarrass myself. The killing of a Minnesota lawmaker is crazy. I mean, it's, it's nuts. It doesn't do anything, doesn't change anything. And if, if they find out that a conservative, I'm a conservative, if a conservative, crazy conservative done that, I believe that if there is an election to take place to replace the representatives that were hurt, that no Republican should run. I, I think that if you're trying to make a change forcefully, then I, I think that whoever is doing the deed for the person that they think, if they're doing it for the conservatives, I think that the Republicans or whoever the Conservative Party is up there should not put anybody up against any Democrat. They should pick who they want. Now, if it's a crazy person from the Liberal Party that killed these people because of the way that they supported some of the conservative things, then I believe that the shoe's on the other foot, that, that if they're trying to do that, that, trying to replace people that are middle-line or conservative, I believe that's just the same. I believe that the Democrats ought to take a look at... believe that's just the same. I, I believe that the Democrats ought to take a look at how they replace that person if it's up for election. Now, they just may be replaced, I don't know how they run their deal up there, but to change a political system for down here in our state, in our county, in our city, through a bullet, or a knife, or a gun, is, I think we should fight it. So, if, if something was to ever happen to me, I hope you guys find somebody exactly like me to set up here, just for spite, is what I'm trying to say.
That might be pretty hard.
It might be.
I'm done. You have to know mic math and-
Nope, that's it, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mingus?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Very good. I have nothing else to add to that conversation, but anyway, thank everyone for showing up tonight, those that attended. It's always good to see at least a few folks show up. Whether you spoke or not, that's okay, too. We get it. Not always the easiest thing to do. I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday evening, July first, twenty twenty-five, at six PM.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
All present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. We are adjourned until we meet again.